But I don't do texting, I don't do any of that. So when I call on the phone and tell you to talk to you or President King, I have called you on the phone and talked to you at length. Martin, I have talked to Martin, he's been in the, in the, uh, um, office in the morning. He does whatever he does and he goes by there in the morning. Um, Vice President Wheeler has been there in the afternoon and in the evening. And while he's been there, he has been talked to. So information, hands and flowing. But when you want everybody to hear it all at the same time, this is the place to hear it. This is the place where you got your, um, where you got your, a law director supposedly, that's supposed to represent you. And so my thing is, let's get this together, let's get it over with and let's talk about it in totality in an executive forum. Okay?
Oh, Lord, please shut up.
So, um, and, uh, Mr. Omaze, I really do appreciate it too much. Okay, moving right along, um, we are, um...
Draft steps.
A draft steps to appoint three commissioners. Uh, we're going to, um, we have a, um, uh, a master plan for this. And, uh, Madam Cook, you wanted to explain what we have going here, so, and make sure that you got it loud enough so that what audience is here can hear.
Yeah, our, uh...
Oh, here.
Here. Here.
Each of the counselors had decided that they each picked five names that they thought would be a good representation. And then from here, um, today, we were going to pick what was the best way to do the vetting process. The next step was, uh, that we were going, we're gonna start putting books together and have, um, resumes and backgrounds on each of these people so that the counselors can have a good book to start with and to take home and to read and guide by. What we need to do is almost like, uh, when we're doing the book report, we need to, to start, um...
We're doing a process of elimination from the master plan.
One second, can you repeat again, the very beginning, you said that, uh, first?
We already picked the five names, each counselor picked their five names. And we were talking about, we wanted to get group resumes and bios on each person so we could put it in those binders. And I wanted to, we wanted to create a binder for each councilperson so it would help with the vetting process. So as we went through it, because we may be ending up changing out names, I mean, this was just your first go around, I think. There was nothing to stop us from changing out some of the names that you originally came up with.
And that was, uh, your suggestion, one of your suggestions, um, my learned colleague, you...
Absolutely, and I have a name that I'd like to throw on here right now.
Well, we can write it on there and we'll print it on, send it on down.
I'd like to let it say, it's an expired record and everybody sees it.
What's the difference, does it make it be on the, uh...
Oh, wow.
You want to hear his name?
Actually, it's one name, but maybe two names, right? George Forbes. Do you have residence up the city?
No.
No, it don't have to be.
Pardon me, pardon me, I think that you made a recommendation to put Mr. Forbes' name on the master plan, on the master...
Right.
On the master...
The second name is Gerald Fields.
Which is Mr., um, Forbes' sign-in line.
So you add him to you this, too?
Yes, those two names. So just in case Mr. Forbes, uh, won't do it, he'll probably say, Mr. Field, consider, or, yeah, Mr. Field, consider, in his name.
Fields, considered, is a conflict, it's definitely conflict, he's on the petitions, uh...
Uh, pardon me, Mr. Fields.
Yeah, I, I...
Okay, right, okay, right. Let's strike, let's strike his name.
Okay.
You're right, you're right.
Anybody can be, first of all, I'm still saying this, and I don't know where the conflict or the argument is. This is a master draft of names, which the counselors have to do a process of elimination, which there's only three commissioners that's supposed to be chosen. So if you got twenty names, you can't have but three. So whatever the, whatever y'all wanna throw on the, on the, uh, master, master draft, that's fine. But when it comes down, you can go, that's why she's saying, we'll give you the background, we'll give you the, um, the resume, and that was one of your suggestions, Mr. King.
Yes.
So that's what is in here. Now, out of twenty-five names, you still only can come up with three, okay? So we don't need to even go...
Yeah, but Madam Truman, I need to say this, because I'm looking at this document here.
Yeah.
And it says, this is the petition for annexation.
Yes.
And here are the people on the petition for annexation. Gary Norton on Newberry, your attorney Dale Fields up on Oak Hill, this one person that Brandy just brought up, I said it's a conflict. Lynette, LaToya, Lynette Foster on Newberry, Lilian, Phyllia Sharper, who's the deputy director of Kyle Comedown Democratic Party, and Michael Smith. But they, as far as I'm concerned, they could, they could never be a part of this, because you, you know exactly where they stand, they're pushing the merger. And, and I, I just don't think that they could even should be considered. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin, you can do anything, I still say, you don't have to have but three. You can't have but three.
Okay.
And whatever comes down, you can't have no one but three. So it's a process, it's a process of elimination, okay? Uh, yes, Mr. King?
If, if I could, if I could tell a story to my colleague?
My colleague.
We struck today, okay, so, my story, I was in the airport. Cleveland, Ohio. My friend George walked in, the cookie shop, the day after he beat the Cavs. Remember the last...
He Michael George?
He, only time I've ever seen him in life, right? He walked in there to get some cookies. Guy says, hey, can I get your autograph? He said, why would you want my autograph? After what I did to y'all last night, for the side of the playoffs. Know what he said?
What?
You're the greatest player ever. Of course I want your autograph.
And, and...
So what's your point?
What's your point?
You matter how you feel about it? You matter how you feel about it?
I don't think he had any feelings.
He's a great negotiator.
But first of all, I don't think...
You talking about George Forbes?
First of all, first of all, I don't think Mr. Martin had any feelings. So what Mr. Martin said was, they're on the, they're on the committee. And I think that's a conflict of interest.
Took Fields off.
So what he's saying is a logical, knowledgeable situation. He didn't say nothing about somebody when somebody said that Mr. Forbes threw a chair across the room many, many years ago. I don't like him, I don't like his politics, I don't like this. He said what was happening in the area of him being on a committee or whatever. Now, we're not gonna discuss this, because y'all...
But listen, Mr. Fields is not, Mr. Forbes is not on there, right? Now, if you, if you were to pick, right, a pick again, in basketball, who would you pick? Come on, we are here to...
Mr. King?
That's, that's my rationale behind it.
Sounds okay, I have given you leeway. I'm not on this issue.
I will put Mr. Forbes under, but I, we will need, um, resumes or bios for everybody, so I can start with books together. Counselor, I'll, I'll be bios for everybody. Does Counselor want you to start doing background information?
There's a, a small blur, be fine.
I think more depth would be better.
First of all, I don't care about, uh, Mr. Forbes and what he's done and the background. We know he's a lawyer, we know this one is a lawyer, we know this one is a lawyer. So whatever you, in just a four or five lines telling something about, they can make a decision on the three. Whatever three they decide this counsel will go with. So you put it in the book, you put the, and all that, is it just not necessary?
Does anybody know the name of the new school or student?
Yeah, Stan Sobel.
Sobel.
Stan Sobel.
Okay, can we move on now? We've moved on to that.
So I'll start with the...
Yes, and remarks of the public.
Wait a minute, I apologize for what you wore.
Apologize for what?
This is important.
That you go get me the red...
In the legislation that we are to draft, I just brainstormed some things, I gave to Wheeler. I wanted, I wanted it to be passed around so everyone could look at it and, and kinda give me a feedback on what they thought of.
But you started with Wheeler, you bypassed me. And Wheeler said, well, you're going to get the right, we divided, are we not?
But I wanted it passed around.
Well, communication didn't, didn't move up to the, to the council.
I'm telling you, let's move here.
Where is the document at?
Wheeler got it.
Come on, y'all. Uh, Councilman Nelson Baker, I speak.
It's a city business.
This is a, uh... This is, this is a... This is a tough time for this city.
Yeah.
And I know we, we, we can agree to disagree, but I'm being very, very clear with this thing. This is, this, this is all a network of individuals, both seen and unseen, that are doing whatever they can do in order to, to, to put this city in a moment where it has no choice. And I, and I, I've been here long enough. And I, and it's not like I don't know the cars that some individuals hold. And we know the intent and behaviors of the individuals in which we deal with. And if you know the behaviors of your opponent, how is it that you go in accordance with what it is that they wanna do? I am, I'm losing it, and I'm, I'm trying to say this most professionally. A written, a, a mandamus filed against Cleveland, uh, East Cleveland council members.
Stupid.
Right, just, just because we took the initiative to invalidate a petition which the language was flawed. And yet this person reports every day to an eight-to-five job and still files a mandamus, again, as a city employee, city executive cabinet member.
Making a hundred thousand.
And can file a remand, a mandamus, not as a resident. He's, it, it cannot be done like that. That's not the function of government. Not in his case, then that means that he should go and leave while this mandamus is being discussed. So that he can function without a biased mentality while being up there in that office. But unfortunately, checks make people do strange things. And I, and I tried to say that most professionally too.
Uh, you get it.
I, 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 you know, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas, uh, again, I'm, I'm gonna stand by East Cleveland. The language was definitely a misrepresentation of the truth and, 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 and it's, uh, on, you know, ultimate goal. And because it, it did not achieve the, the right goal from the start, I just don't think that it's valid. And a mandamus forcing us after the fact, we took our legislative authority. If it was thrown back into our court, we did our, we, we did what was responsible and what was just upon a legislative act. And so a mandamus should not be before us today. I, I, I will not be forced into an, an, an annexation process or conversation, I cannot. How about I force you to do your job and manage the doggone city?
That's what it needs to be doing, that's what a mand...
Manage the budget. I can't believe this, like, like, it's a, it's a moment between right and wrong, and these legislators up here better get the, get the doggone point.
That's true, you were right, I have to give it to you that way.
Uh, I think that, I think that basically, uh, we have come to the end of the conversation or discussion. And I think that what you said, uh, Mr., Mr. Omaze, I think that we have come to the end of discussion, and I have said, this is a matter of urgency. Anything that we do up here has to be within the purview of our legislative authority. And like you say, you took the legislative authority, but I am still saying, if your law director is saying that she cannot represent us, then we have a problem and we must do something different. But first of all, I want it all in writing to us, and I'm going down to King and Buckley tomorrow and hear what he has to say about...
I will respect your intention.
Well, it's, you know...
Yes.
It's like, we need to have some kind of direction all of them can go. So basically, what I'm saying now...
Can you go?
Yes, he can.
You wanna go, Wheeler?
I can.
So, thank you, Martin, because Vice President shot the option to go.
No, no. You didn't ask?
Nobody asked you.
Baker, Baker...
This conversation will include you.
He going.
What you can do is call a meeting, meet with your...
Uh, first of all, Mr. Omaze, please, I, I love you too much, and I appreciate it, because you are such a great perfection. But what I'm saying to you is that I think that this board is capable of making a decision.
I don't know.
Okay, well, if you don't, I don't think, I think you should not be sitting here, you should be sitting up there. Okay, so what, uh... What, uh, we're moving right along to, um... Remarks of the, what is it? I think that, oh, we didn't do the financial recovery, I'm sorry.
I'm here, right, there's only, I looked through it. I thought it was Jack, there was only two changes. I asked, like you, uh, asked about the ministries, the new church. The reason that it wasn't a shared services at this time, he explained that, and I assumed exactly what he said. Partnering, uh, on page five, partnering with Christ International Ministries Incorporated, Department Health and its Brown Senior Center, that will be changed in November. He only left it there now, because it's really not revenue generating at this point in time, because they are being given, like Grandchild, you know, for a couple of months, because they're doing all those recares. But, uh, he will be revamping this again come November. The only other action...
That, that can fall under unforeseen revenue, uh, revenue generation, because it's, it's, it's something that we cannot predict. So obviously, it's coming, so if it, if it is or it isn't in here, doesn't, doesn't have a full weight in this document.
Well, that was just, but, um, Tishin, um, looked at it and just said it was okay right there at this point in time. They did add in about the increases in medical services. And, uh, the only other big change was on page five, number fourteen, about the automated license plate reader program that is running, uh, in place September first.
Wait, where are you at? No.
On page five.
I got five, you said fourteen?
Yeah, it's number fourteen.
Oh, I see it, I see it, yeah.
One more time, number fourteen is, is different from the other?
Yeah, uh, page five, number fourteen, is something that they're...
Readers are on the back of these cars, the cameras have been recently placed, uniform across the state of Ohio. And it definitely has, um, been a fun generator for the law enforcement in the court system. Cancers, drivers, and suspended, uh, warrants, active warrants.
Yes, if I may, uh, before we launch in the public, I would like to say that, uh, if you guys are meeting with the lawyers, that is an exception in which, you know, you can have an executive session, so all of you could go.
What time does that mean, you go?
Ten, I am going, I asked you.
At ten to five.
It's a...
No, you can't go now.
Uh, I will call off.
Call, exacting session.
I think that because it's the last minute notice though, um, and because of the importance that, uh, the twenty-four hour rule...
Is it a sunshine?
Yes, sunshine, well, it's...
No, no, not with the records to be with the lawyers.
Because it's litigation or legal.
Because it's legal, it's just his litigation.
All right, that, so it falls under the, the, you know, same thing as it, as it, you're going to take exacting session?
And litigation, so this is...
All right, listen, I already asked to go, point solved for me.
Continue with, uh, the recovery plan and this, uh, and...
Yeah, those were the, the useful points that were put in there, uh, the adjustments on there. And we have questions about, so the House was finding here, and Tishin, uh, he don't have any problems, they just tweaked a few little things.
Madam President, I don't wanna hold the process up, I just, we don't have time, but I think this section number...
Yeah, we do have time.
This fourteen is, this, this is something new. I heard on the radio, they were talking about it on the radio there at another city. But I'm not familiar with, it said, the city intends to initiate an automated license plate reader program that will automate the issuance of traffic citation with a police officer present. The ALPR program, civil penalties shall be allocated and paid to the manager and the city on a fifty-fifty basis, net of reasonable third-party expenses and city reimbursement, provided that the ALPR is deployed more than one hundred and twenty hours a month per year. The city employees' time will be reimbursed by PFS. This would generate, and this is approximately six hundred and sixty-three thousand annually to the city, so...
And PFS is the one that reneges all of that.
Right, and, and on top of that, just for your information, the, the, uh, traffic cameras are still in effect in East Cleveland.
Yes, sir.
They're still giving people tickets.
Every day.
Right, so this is a different thing altogether, this, this is a different program altogether.
More cameras.
Officer will be on site, and that's, is it, the plate readers as well on the back of the cars too? Because the, the language in here is, the plate readers are on the back of cars.
Well, an officer would have, uh...
And that's undriven car, is this another program in which there's a tripod?
I don't know the mechanics of the ten hour...
And I would need to know what this looks like, because there's a different statement that should be in here referencing what program you're talking about. But an automated plate reader is out there on, uh, one of the police cars, it's the two cameras that sit on the thing.
Yep, that's what it is.
So are you telling me that this is that? Or you're telling me that it's some other program where there's a fixed location?
No, it will be a mobile location and a person, a man or a woman.
Driving in a vehicle.
They would be, uh, there and it would be mobile, they would be...
How would it be mobile?
They would change locations.
So they were, they, they are sitting somewhere stationary.
Right.
But watching, watching the tickets be issued.
Right.
House Bill three forty-two would be...
All right, so it's contingent upon the state houses bill, uh, that they mandate that an officer be present to be with. All right, I'm clear on that part. So this, this little statement right here saying automated license plate reader program, who came up with that?
Um, it's an amendment from our other program that didn't comport exactly with what the General Assembly intended.
Okay, you can't probably, I wouldn't, I, I don't feel comfortable with using license plate reader, because that's already being used on the law enforcement jurisdiction that's on the back of cars.
But this will be a physical person who would be...
It's not the same thing? You gotta call it mobile, mobile, uh, you gotta call it mobile something? Mo- mobile traffic?
Stationer.
Traffic, uh, traffic program, mobile traffic program? You can't call it license plate reader, because that is a, a, a device that's placed on the back of a car. I'm telling you, because I'm a cop.
Call ATS, it should be called ATS, because...
Call it something else.
I, I don't have enough information to call it anything right now.
It doesn't fall, fall within the God mind, I think.
And, and I think this is, this basically has been amended twice.
Why is there one question? PFS, you've been in trouble with them before?
Yes, we have.
Yes.
And you're the ones that, that overstepped these guys?
They're the ones that, uh, didn't pay the money.
Do we have a complaint filed against them?
Yeah.
Well, um, I don't, I don't think...
All right, and, and if, if there's something filed, can you issue that in, in, in writing? Uh, I don't, because I, I don't think we can discuss if there was litigation against them.
No, I, I, I would know about it, no.
Before my time, I don't say where they had problems, uh, collecting, wasn't it they were having...
Tish mentioned them.
What is, are these people that we sold the, 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 the liquid, uh... Uh, not, not taxes, the liquid, uh, uh, traffic camera tickets too?
Yes.
In some tune of eight hundred thousand dollars?
They did not give the money.
I think...
And they were to collect some, some, some of them, like one, it was one billion something dollars out there, but they were gonna collect them probably eight hundred thousand dollars.
I think Jack could give you a clear, but that was a...
Yeah, they were fighting back and forth.
I just want some clarity on that. Just want some clarity on what we're standing on. Madam President?
ATS.
No. They had House Bill three forty, the House Bill three forty-two, and that program are in perfect alignment with...
Okay, but the one they passed, Danny Red Light Cameras was over there, it was struck down.
Well, it's just at the federal court level, and it'll inevitably go to the Ohio Supreme Court. And we anticipate the Ohio Supreme Court, uh...
Strike it down.
Yeah.
So, but for right now, it's our ballot?
Yes, for right now, but we know it's going to the Ohio Supreme.
Yeah, so can, can, just not to cut him off, because see, we're talking about at least a year or two before we get to Ohio Supreme.
Right.
At least a year to two years?
That's getting the experience.
Now, in, in regards to this, this had major concerns, but for the sake of this document, it's fine. This is not something that's set in place, it's still has complete counsel, it's gonna be approved by counsel, so we need to make sure that all eyes on this one comes in front of us. We need to pass this document before Monday. I talked to...
You put this one here?
The entire document. Yeah, I talked to Tish, it's due on the twenty-sixth, I talked to Tish right before I came in here, and she said that if it's not passed, they can't discuss it Monday.
Well, I, I didn't get a call.
I, right before I walked in, I... I, right before I walked in. That's something to save for here, but their name wasn't on that. And. That's something that as a body, we should have known. So the twenty-sixth was actually the deadline? She said she called Patty and let to see a new deadline. She's saying, get it done before Monday. Hopefully, she'll hear. But right now, without this thing being passed, she won't hear.
Hammerhead?
The, the body.
Yeah, the fiscal commission.
They won't hear it unless it's passed. And if it's not passed by counsel, then where? Where's blank?
So what's the deadline?
It was the twenty-sixth, but they're not meeting until Monday? So she said, if you get it passed before Monday, it's a good chance their light dogs will hear. But if it's not passed, they're not even gonna look at it.
She, she was pretty clear, uh, councilman, about her demands upon this being on time. And at that point, it wasn't, it, it, at that point, we, we heard from her at that meeting. That if it was not on time, that that's borderline criminal. This plan was not our responsibility, it's our responsibility to forward it now, but it wasn't our responsibility upon its receipt. You know, the, the, the authority rested within the administration to get this down to us on time in a timely fashion. Nobody told.
Right.
Somebody to wait till the last minute.
That's right. And I totally agree with you.
And so when I, when I raise the point where just equally so, we have a mandamus because we missed a, a thirty-day mark. And, and how does this and this not have the same doggone precedence? I feel, I feel like, I feel like that, that there's a stretch on this. And not a stretch on this.
Well, let me say.
I would ask that somebody, the council strongly considers the mandate by Monday at one. So that we're not looking upon as the person who told it, or the body that told the city.
First of all, let me say this. First of all, let me say this. I'm the president of council. I'm the chair of the finance committee. And I have called Tish four and five times in the last month. I talked to, um, Jack Johnson just the other day. And he was telling me that he going to present a financial recovery plan. Never has he put it here to this council. That's number one. Number two, you are not the chair of finance, but she should be talking to me. We could have had a meeting, a finance meeting, but we were waiting to get this, uh, recovery plan. And all of a sudden, it's dropped in our lap. Now, what is, what I'm saying to you is Tish ain't talked to none of us, why she talk to you? Okay, then she should have, but not you calling her, she should have been calling the chair of the finance committee. The person that puts all this together, so we could have had a finance committee meeting. And be prepared for been waiting on that recovery plan forever. And it has not happened. And Hammerhead had to threaten administration about getting it there and getting it done. And the mayor is not sitting down there.
You don't care.
Okay, and it, it ain't, I ain't got nothing to do with it, well, he don't care, or I care, but he's not sitting in that chair. Talking to us and saying, counsel, look, please, we gotta have this for Monday.
Well, as mayor designate, Neil, I implore you, please, uh, pass it.
No, no, I, I would, I would like to reiterate, just so that, I said.
You didn't even know.
I talked to Tish. And this document needs to be passed before Monday at one, in order for it to be considered Monday. Just wanna get that, that, that tool, counselor.
Given a draft form, it can be modified.
Listen, you, you, I am gonna stand firm on what I'm saying, and I hope that, that you weigh, weigh the gravity of my tone. When does a person had, you know, having had enough? Like, I, it, it, I've worked under this administration and outside of this administration and religiously. Since I've been involved with the city since two thousand nine. This stuff has not taken precedence on being on time. It is not on time, it does not include people in a healthy discussion. How many times does a person have to stab you in the back before you say that's enough bleeding?
You draw a blood.
You're speaking, you're speaking right, cause he's a Ted on this.
Like literally, I, I. I don't wanna cause the city trouble, but this, and I don't need to look at this, we're in charge of budget and appropriation. Just sending it right here doesn't.
Mean nothing.
And I, I've been to school and you have too. You study last minute for a test and you bound and set yourself up a failure.
Okay, uh, one more, one more, Mark and Dan, and let's, we're gonna move on.
You know, I, I agree with Baker. But, but in the same token. The problem we have, it comes back to this, this, this has been, he's been politics for years. The mayor don't get along with the, with the council, and the council don't get along with the mayor. No, wait, but let me.
Let, let, let you speak, Mark.
All I'm saying is whether, we don't have to love this guy. But we got, we gotta work together to get this, not I'm saying pass it, not I'm saying. But I'm saying, we gotta force, we gotta, we gotta force their hand, cause this is politics is being played. And right now, he's winning that game.
No, he's not.
He's, he's, he's got us under the gun, trying to make, make us look bad. But, well, look, we gotta, we gotta know how to address these issues. Because right now, we don't wanna, they, lawsuits and so forth. I'm just saying that we got, we, we, we gotta bring him to the table and let him walk away. But bring him to the table, so at least we can say that we're doing our diligence on our side, trying to sit down and negotiate so we can get these things done together.